All right, so who do we have with us? We have Elaine, Kim, Bill, Alan, myself, and we have Cheryl and Chris. Is Candy with us yet?
She emailed to say she would be with us, but I don't see her.
Is Nancy Vaughn a visitor or a member?
Visitor, I think.
Hi, everybody. It's Julie. Nancy Vaughn works for Voices.
Oh, hello. How are you?
Okay, with that, we do have our forum. I would like to call this meeting to order of the Roxbury zoning commission. Virtual meeting via Zoom or teleconference Monday, December 13th, 7:30 PM. We will seat our members, regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Johnson, Bill Horgan, and myself, Jim Conway. That leads us to the minutes of our November 8th meeting to review, and if there's any corrections or amendments.
I do just a correction in the spelling of Candy's name. It should be under C A N D I, and then under, sorry, just above the EO report. It's just C A N D, just has to add the I.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And if everybody has reviewed the minutes and everybody is satisfied, I entertain a motion to approve.
This is Kim. I motioned to approve the minutes of November 8th with the spelling corrections.
This is Bill. I second. Do I have a second?
Bill seconded the motion.
Moved and seconded. All in favor on the minutes?
Elaine abstains.
I'm standing because I wasn't there.
There's three of us. That should be all right, right?
Yeah, Bill, myself and you. Yeah, that's three. We're good.
Sorry. We'll pass it with three votes.
Yes, minutes are good.
Thank you.
I'd like to move the election of commission officers down a bit, and we can get through the rest of the agenda if there's, you know, some discussion. We are putting on item number five, ongoing review of current zoning regulations. Basically, when Karen brought that to me and we, you know, we kind of just agreed that this could be on the agenda going forward because we're constantly charged with reviewing the regulations. And I feel that if it's on our agenda, then people can come, obviously, and listen in on as not to contribute, but to listen in on our discussions of current regulations. So from my standpoint, I would like to see this on the agenda throughout. And there will be some meetings that might be a little busier than others. This might get not discussed much, and then if there's time allows, we'll jump into it. But for this evening, it's basically everybody can pick up our book and read through it at your leisure. And if you find something that we feel as a commission is out of line, then we should address it before someone else does for us.
That sounds like a good idea.
That's kind of why it's there and try to stay ahead. So with that being said, if this evening, if somebody does have some comments on current regulations that we just want to open a door, so to speak, now's the time.
This is Kim. I think at our, one of the meetings that when Gail came and talked about the regulations, we had questions about the section seven. And that had to do really with special permit, but it doesn't make it clearly, it's not clearly defined that that's what it's about. I know that was a, that was a one that was confusing. And I think that that could be easily remedied by making a notation that it is for special permits. It doesn't say it. I think, you know, it was written for that. You know, we can just clarify with, with Gail to make sure that there wasn't anything else that was amiss in there, but I just know that that was one that was recently talked about.
I think that's a good starting point because it's relatively fresh. And we can get started with that. And those are the type of things that we're looking for, I believe, as a commission to change, rectify, and get straightened out for sure.
You know, one of the things that it was in one of the writings that we had at the meeting, but I brought up the, and Jim, it's because you brought it up during the campaign. It was about the political signs, and it was actually something that was brought before that commission at the time to update that. And it said it in the, at the end, that it had been done, but that it hadn't been done. So it's actually something that was approved. It went through the process, but then the regulation wasn't corrected. So those things will come up, which is kind of interesting. So, you know, and that would be just an easy fix.
Make sure everything is updated properly and current, that's for sure. Because there's been issues in the past with the same thing, where people will go online or grab our book or whatever, and they say, well, this is it right here. And well, it's because it hasn't been updated properly.
Yeah.
Definitely, that's got to be taken care of.
May I ask, just to clarify, what you're saying is we made an amendment, but it did not make it into the, into the regs? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it was actually, I think, a separate section on political signs was added. So the reference to political signs should have been taken out of another area. And it wasn't. So during the campaign, it said in two spots, one said they could go up. You know, there wasn't a restriction, and the other said that there was a restriction. So it was a conflict, so it just needed to be updated. So one thing, and I brought, I brought this up at a couple of meetings. Just keep in mind, when you're looking at the regulations, that the ones online are really, the listing online, the zoning regs are the most current. The books that we have are not necessarily current. So it's important that, because I just, I, I download that onto my desktop, and that's the one I use. I don't use the paper copy anymore. So that's just important.
Do you find that more cumbersome? Can, can you, you know, you're more computer savvy than I am. Can you, can you deal more in a more speedy fashion when you view things online?
Well, there is a search function on it as well. When Jimmy put those online, you actually can, you know, it'll highlight all the things that it might reference that term that you're looking up. And sometimes it's confusing, but sometimes you, you actually can find things a lot more simply. And, you know, I don't have to print out all those pages and pages of things, you know. I just, I personally find it.
I'm not so sure. We might have to check as well with which one takes precedent over the other. When you have two forms of regs, only one is to be used, so to speak, in court. We have to determine which one's going to be used, and the other one's going to get tossed. And I believe in the past, when they did online, in the beginning, Karen can step in here as well. We always said the online ones weren't binding, and the actual written ones were.
That was the way it used to be. I'm not sure if that's currently the way it is, but we should check into that for sure. And of course, the issue with keeping the book up to date is every time you even change a couple of paragraphs, you have to reprint the entire book. So that's very cumbersome, too, so.
So one of them has to be ahead of the other.
Right.
We have to decide.
We should check with Gail on that, I think.
Which one, which one's it gonna be that is gonna be the boss?
Because it's so much easier to update the online than it is the paper, so.
Right.
It would be good if that were the precedent, but we really, that's a good point. We do need to know that.
Right. All right, we'll, we'll find out, you know, because we have them both. And obviously, online ones, we certainly would feel that are easier to update and keep current versus the printed version. But then we've had some issues online as well. Come back. So whichever one it is, preference would be online. We need to make sure that those are changed immediately when things, we change. We, we do stuff in our zoning regs much more than other towns do. There's other towns out there that haven't changed the word in 10 years. And we're constantly messing with it. And that's part of the issue, but we're doing it faster than Jimmy can punch them in.
So I have a question for Karen. So when we do make a change, what's the process? What happens?
Basically, I, it goes to Jimmy from the public hearing notices and, and the notices. And then he updates, he updates the online. But so far, there hasn't been any more reprintings of the paper. And we have changed at least two or three regs that I can think of off the top of my head, so.
And Karen, is there any quality control function that comes in where somebody actually goes back once those regs have been changed online and reviews them to make sure they were changed correctly?
Yeah, just us looking at them.
Okay.
Because obviously, there's, you know, there can be data entry errors, that kind of thing.
Because I've just been using the red book, which I guess is clearly not the correct path to take, so.
That, that's, that's true. It's a good conversation to have right now so we can figure this out.
This is Bill. If we had a, a in-depth meeting right now, and we needed to cross-reference regulations, and we didn't have the paper book, we'd have to be closing one screen out and getting rid of our Zoom meeting and re, and searching for things online. And wouldn't that be cause for, isn't that more cumbersome than all of us having the green book or the red book?
Are you asking me, Bill, or just in general?
I'm just asking in general.
Yeah.
You know, I've gotten used to looking at them online now, so, you know, I find it easier and quicker, honestly.
But we're, we're talking about during a meeting.
Search function.
Yeah, if we needed to get into a couple of different pages right now.
I see your point. Yeah, I see your point. It probably would be easier to have the book.
Yeah, but the book is really cumbersome and tedious to keep that thing updated all the time. And probably expensive.
Expensive. We have to reprint it every time we change a page.
Now, Karen, with that being said, that you have to reprint, because I know it's from a numbering standpoint. If we do a simple amendment to 14.3, we shouldn't have to reprint the whole book if we're changing a couple of words in 14.3.
Probably not because it wouldn't change the, the pagination. It wouldn't change pages. Soon as the pages get changed, then. But technically, every amendment updates the book, and you really have to redate and revise the regs at that point.
So we'd have to be religious about getting revisions. Revisions would have to come out every month, almost, with the data on it. And yeah, it's like old approach charts flying all over the world with approach charts. You had to, they had to be revised all the time and updated. So we'd have to, once a month, we might get two or three pieces of paper to put in our loose leaf. And that's how it would have to work, I guess.
It's challenging to do it. And I, I have no control over it anymore because now it's, you know, it's done by, by Jimmy. So I, I don't physically update the regs myself any longer, so.
The way we used to, sorry, excuse me, Elaine. The way we used to do it was when we had a revision, we would open up our books during the meeting and redline that, and that chapter. But to Bill's point, what I use for all of my Zoom meetings is I use my telephone for the Zoom. That's why my picture looks so bad. And I, and I use my iPad or my desktop for my regs. So I do have two screens open, Bill.
But not everyone does.
That way I don't lose, I don't lose my concentration.
Yeah, and the way I, the way I do it, this is Kim, I, I minimize, you know, I don't have the Zoom screen. I'm actually moving you around all over my screen right now because I don't have it as full screen, and then I have the other stuff opened on the side, so. But that's just, you know, getting used to doing that.
Yeah, and everyone's at a different level of technology to access to, which is an issue, too. I mean, there's a lot of challenges with this.
Yep, this has been a challenging two years.
Well, I do think that moving forward, that if we're all talking, we're going to use online regs, and every meeting, we're going to have those online regs open for discussion because we're talking about review of current regs. They're going to have to be in front of us. So all of us have to, have to figure out within our own devices at home how to make that happen, like Kim says she can minimize and have both on her desktop, laptop, whatever. So we have to figure out, everybody's got to figure out how to have the regs in front of us and the people we're talking to.
Julie, can Julie, can you come on for a minute and talk about the capability of putting it on the screen for us?
Hi, it's Candy. I have a question. When we start getting together in person, when all this is kind of normalized, do we then have to bring in an iPad or a laptop or something to look at the regs if we're going to be discussing them?
Well, hopefully, we can see it on the screen, so you wouldn't each have to have it.
Yeah, but when we start getting together, Karen?
Yeah. With the hybrid, from my understanding, and Julie's definitely more qualified to talk to this, but with the hybrid, I think we can see on the screen during the meeting. But I haven't actually been to a hybrid meeting yet, so I'm not totally up to speed on how it's going to work. Julie, Julie's here. Good.
Yep, it's me. Excuse me. It's Julie. Um, as far as a hybrid, I wouldn't even talk about it right now because I don't even know how it's going to happen. Um, right now, the way they, what they've done, which Kim can attest to, Jimmy had to come in and patch in just so they could transmit, because all the equipment is not here.
Okay.
So I don't want to speak on how it's going to work because I don't know how it's going to work until I actually physically use it.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, however, if you decide you want to go over a certain chapter, as long as you outline your parameters ahead of time, there is no reason why we can't get a copy of it and have it uploaded to your next meeting.
Okay.
But that being said, I would choose, I don't want to say, I would caution you on what you want to talk about because if it's something that is going to cross-reference into other areas, if you want to look at those areas, I'm going to need access to that, too. But personally, I open the regs on my iPad when I'm doing a meeting. So I have the laptop and I use an iPad, so.
Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Yeah, I can't, oh, sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
So relative to what you said, Candy, we'd have to really all bring two devices to the face-to-face meetings, then?
One, I think one.
So Julie, Julie would have something on a big screen, or she'd have the meeting on the big screen, and we'd be working on our laptop or iPads on the side?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how that would work. Now, one thing, Julie and Karen, during my Zoom meetings for a club I belong to, we actually share screens. So whoever the host is can share the screen. And if the host has the regs on their laptop, computer, whatever, they can share it, and we all see it. Okay?
That's what I was asking about.
No, that, that can be done. Share screens happen all the time in the other meetings.
Yeah, because that's another way around, even at Zoom meetings.
When, when we had all the Woods public hearings for all those years, that's exactly how we did it.
Yeah.
And Julie, Julie's our expert, so. She'll know before we know.
All right, well, that's food for thought moving into 2022 that we're going to have to, as a commission, deal with that. And however it works out for each individual to have access to the regs so we can all discuss them. I think it can be worked out. Okay, we're going to move on. Our CEO report is part of our packet. Maybe Julie, unless everybody has seen it. Julie can pop it up.
That, Jim, that did go out with the packets to everyone, so.
Okay, well, it's in front of us to discuss if there's any questions. I really can't answer too many of them. John obviously put it together. And it appears relatively quiet.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions. It was pretty clear.
I'm sure he's.
Yeah, I'm sure he's relieved that it's a little more quiet.
And we had quite a busy spell there for a while.
Yeah.
All right. Well, there's no motion involved with the CEO report, so. Chairman's report. Basically, I covered most of everything I wanted to say in item five, review of our regs. But I did want to allow Kim to bring us up to speed on the Board of Selectmen's discussion of cannabis.
Sure, so we decided at the, the Board of Selectmen meeting to bring the discussion of cannabis ordinance to a town meeting to get town input, and that will be in January. We're just picking a date for that, and it's not for a vote at that point. It's just to get input on a proposed ordinance to prohibit the sale and cultivation of cannabis in Roxbury, and also a separate ordinance to prevent use of cannabis on town property. So those would be the things that would be coming up. And that, if it goes through that way as a town ordinance, then the zoning commission would not have to create a regulation around it. It would be handled strictly through a town ordinance.
It sounds like a good plan to me.
So that's, that's, anybody have any questions on that? That's what we have right now, so.
That's the one we have to have accomplished by January 21st or so, right? Otherwise, it takes an automatic. It's a, right? If I recall correctly.
No, it's not January, so we have, the state is going to review applications for those who are interested in becoming cultivators and getting special permits for that, and that's going to happen, like, I believe in June. So we have till then to make that decision prior to that. Thanks. Sure.
Very good. And basically, Chairman's report, that covers it moving forward for next year. We do have communications from the COG with Jocelyn Air stepping down, and everybody has seen that letter, I believe. Basically, it's just for our review and to acknowledge the fact that things are going to continue moving forward with the COG under Janil. And I believe, the way I read it, that Jocelyn is going to continue our affordable housing plan.
Yes.
To get that underway or completed, because she has been hired to do so. And that's basically there for our information and review. So that leads us to the end, and we go on with the election of zoning commission officers for 2022. And what I am looking for at this time is a nomination for chairman of the zoning commission, and I would like to nominate Bill Horgan.
I'd like to second that nomination.
We have a nomination, and it's been seconded. Is anyone else, any other nominations at this point for chairman? If not, I would ask that nominations for chairman be closed. A motion.
I second.
I move that the nomination for chairman be closed.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Alan, okay, moved and seconded. With that, we're going to entertain a vote for chairman for Bill Horgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous, Bill? Thank you very much for stepping up.
I have sweat on my forehead.
Congratulations, Bill.
Congrats.
I think it's.
But, but Jim, thank, thank you. Thank, you have done a fine, fine job, and I respect the fact that you want to play in your retirement, so congratulations.
I'm gonna, yeah, I feel very comfortable the way things are going. And I'm sticking around. I still have a, well, Kim knows this. Is it a year or two years, Kim? I think one.
Yeah, it's one.
One year. And who knows?
Unless we can't move for longer.
It may be more, yeah, we'll see. I'm not rushing off the commission. I'm just stepping aside. I've always, right from the beginning, I always felt the chairman doesn't need, this position should not be held by the same person year after year. I mean, you know, yeah, give the guy three, four, or five years max, and then get some new blood, new breath, and every, it's the same group of people doing the same thing under a different leadership and watchful eye of Mr. Horgan, which I thank you, Bill. All the confidence in the world.
Well, I want to say something, Jim, and I think Elaine just touched on it because recognizing you, you know, amongst us, you deserve such a big pat on the back for what you've done for Roxbury. Your finger has been on, next to the pulse of this town for your entire life. You've been years on the zoning commission. You've been years as a zoning commission chairman, not to mention being, having been a selectman. So I know that I'm speaking for all of us, and I just want to on record and officially acknowledge my deepest respect and appreciation for you, Jim, and thank you for. For you, Jim, and, uh, thank you for all that you've done for the town, your steadfast dedication. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Bill. Really, I must say, I've enjoyed working with all the members of this commission, and I've seen quite a few, uh, come and go. Uh, to sit back and try to name them all since I started twenty-three years ago. There's been a bunch, and, uh, everybody has come to these meetings with the same. Um, goal in mind, and that is what we're gonna continue. What is the best for everybody in the town of Roxbury? And to move the town forward in, uh, baby steps. Uh, just to keep moving tad forward, but without changing, uh, a whole lot, so, uh. That's the goal, and I think, uh, it's gonna continue that way. And I thoroughly enjoyed working and I'm gonna, I'm sticking around.
You're not going anywhere.
No, not going anywhere. Not selling the house, no.
Jim, I, Jim, I'd just like to add my thank you too. It's really been a pleasure working with you, and I'm happy to hear that you're staying on the commission.
Thank you, Karen, and, uh, no, it's all gonna work out, uh, very well, and, uh, looking forward to the. The new, uh, group. So anyway, moving on, with all that being said, we do have to, um. Choose and elect a vice chairman. And, uh, I will open the floor to nominations for vice chairman.
This is Elaine, and I would like to move, uh, the nomination, uh, for Kim Tester for vice chairman.
Do we have a second for Kim, vice chair?
Bill seconded.
Moved and seconded. Um, do we have any other nominations for vice chairman? Without any, hearing any, entertain the nominations be closed.
I would like, um, to propose a motion to close nominations for vice chair.
And do I have a second?
Bill seconded.
Moved and seconded, nominations are closed, and all in favor of Kim? Continuing as vice chair, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have our new slate relative to that, Bill and Kim. And, uh, believe me, we're gonna charge on as well or better than we have in the past. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so. Pretty much, that's it for our December meeting, and, um, next month. Bill will have it, and, uh, you guys can stick your nose in that book and see what jumps out at you. Right now, we have nothing, to my knowledge, nothing is pressing. It's a good time, good fresh start. New people and, and get some of those things straightened out in that book, so it's user-friendly. And I've always wanted to impress other towns on how well our regs are written and, um. Perceived, and so that's, we have to, uh, keep at that.
And you know, I, I, this has come up before, but I have been hearing this for a long time. That Roxbury is really ahead of the game amongst all of our area towns. And some of the changes and additions we've made, and we should be really proud of that.
And you know, it's, I'll just throw out a few little things in all the years I've been on, and, and. What it boils down to when you're amending a reg, it generally comes from somebody trying to, um. To twist the reg and try to manipulate the reg, uh, take advantage of the reg. And when we as commissioners say, okay, how does he want to twist this up and is it better or what? You know, listen to these people that are stepping in there trying to, uh. Change things and then listen to what they're talking about, and sometimes you generally, you might agree with them. That it needs a change, and some people will do things without. Coming to us first, and then you, you kind of look like, okay, what's the guy doing adding on to the back of a non-conforming house? Why does he want to do that? Well, he needs another bathroom down there. So you say, the light comes on, say, oh, okay, that's not a big deal. And we make it work for him as well as everybody else. So you even have to listen to the. People that are critical of the regs and then bring something out of that criticism. Anyway. That's that.
I agree.
So, uh, thank you very much, and if there's nothing else, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday. And, uh, looking forward to jumping in, in January and charging on.
And I, I miss, I miss our, uh, in-person, uh, wine gatherings.
Yeah.
We thought we were gonna have one in December.
We should all have brought a glass of wine.
Yeah, well, that's true. Oh, gosh, we should have planned that.
Because we need to toast to Jim.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Happy holidays, everyone.
This is Elaine. I will create a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Alan?
Alan.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, aye? Again, thank you, folks, and have a good holiday, and we'll see you next year.
Don't let that omnivirus get to you, because you got a drink in your hand.
Take care, everyone.